Would the members of the board please introduce themselves?
Molly Friedland, alternate.
Mark Rich, member.
John Delaue, vice chair.
John Fink, chair.
Nelson Gill, member.
Patrick Lyons, alternate.
Okay, the next item of business is adoption of the minutes from the August 4th meeting. Is there a motion regarding the minutes, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, please?
Aye.
And Molly, you're senior alternate, right?
Yes.
Yes, and you will be, let's see, one, two, you'll be voting for that. So just when you thought you'd have a nice relaxing evening, I ruined it. Okay, the next item of business is the final plan review for a major use site development entitled Ellsworth Main Solar LLC. For Ellsworth Main Solar LLC, the proposal is to construct a 4.98 megawatt solar energy facility on a 48.68 acre parcel, tax map 30, lot 15, located at 889 Bucksport Road. All of the subject property is located in the rural and drinking water zones. If someone representing the applicant, please, please come up to the table. And why don't you give us a brief review of where we are?
Sure. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. My name's Sean Hale, I'm from VHB, and I have Joel Lindsay with me from Amoresco. And, yep, we're here for our second meeting for the Ellsworth Main Solar Project at 889 Bucksport Road. We were here about a month ago on August 4th for our first hearing. Do you want me to give a brief overview of the project again?
Yes, please.
Okay. The proposed project is a just under five megawatt AC solar facility on about a 45 acre parcel at 889 Bucksport Road, as folks are aware. We're proposing about a 35 acre solar facility in the back northern portion of the parcel. There's an existing access drive off of Route 1 which will provide access to the facility. The, since we were here on August 4th, we've had some coordination with Elena and Carrie and the board about comments we received at the first meeting. Some of those items included adding some provisions to the operation maintenance plan to allow for regular inspections of the stormwater management system and revegetation of the site, and that we would notify the city and particularly water department staff when those inspections occur, and those will be four times a year for two years. And we've added that note to the operation and maintenance plan and to the plans themselves. We also had some questions about specifying that the existing paved residential access drive would be repaired post-construction to a standard that would meet the fire department standards for access, so we've added those notes and provisions to the plans as well. And also a provision that that drive be maintained open at all times to allow for emergency access. I'm trying to think of the things that we, other comments that we got that we have addressed, excuse me. Oh, we updated the plans to provide for a 20-foot wide gravel road, the detail had been incorrect, and that's incorrectly stated, 18 feet. And we've updated the perimeter fencing detail to allow for a gap at the base for wildlife passage. We had already proposed that, but the detail needed to be updated. So, you know, Elena, like I said, we've had some good back and forth with her, and at this point, we've submitted in hard copy an updated operation and maintenance plan. We're holding off on submitting the actual final plans on mylar in hard copy, we were waiting for this hearing to occur, but we anticipate that we'll be submitting the final plans subsequent to this meeting. And I guess, you know, that's kind of an overview of where we're at. I guess I turn it over to the board to ask specific questions, or maybe, you know, particular items that you want to discuss in more detail.
Have you received the letter from Ms. Ackerman?
We did.
Okay. And do you wish to answer any of those questions that you have?
No, I mean, we would answer as directed by the board, but we don't have any prepared response to that.
I have one question on your item number three here. You had mentioned quarterly inspections for erosion, and as this is worded in this note here, "to attend quarterly and as-needed inspections," and I can't quite comprehend what that means.
Oh, I'm sorry, "as-needed" is in response to precipitation events, just large storms, essentially, that could necessitate the need for inspection of stormwater controls.
But it will remain gray?
Say that again, sorry.
That will actually remain gray. Is it a one-inch event, a two-inch event?
That has not been specified.
Okay, thank you.
Sean, in the updated package, I asked Elena, there's a copy of a decommissioning plan in here, is it just for kind of display purpose because it's from Tiverton, Rhode Island? Is this just an example of what your performance bond would look like?
We were asked to provide an example, so yeah, it is an example, but it's very representative of what a bond looks like.
Right.
But, yeah, I didn't redact out the town or anything.
No, okay, I figured it was just in there as an example.
Yeah.
But, I mean, normally, we, our approval is contingent upon the performance bond being approved by city council, and that'll most likely be in the final approval if it gets approved.
Okay, so I was assuming, yeah, it would, approval would be, a condition of the approval would be to get it up, yeah.
I guess, I mean, I think some of these questions that Ms. Ackerman asked, I mean, I'll go down through them and ask them, some of them have probably already been answered. But, and some of the things that she talks about is the panels grounded such that lightning will easily travel to the ground, thereby reducing the chance of a fire in a grassy meadow.
The system has to be grounded.
Okay. One thing she talks about is, on the road, it has two turnarounds, you know, 90-degree turnarounds. She's concerned about, she would rather have circular turnarounds to eliminate the beeping of trucks, but I don't particularly see that as a big problem. I mean, maybe during construction, when trucks going in and out, but once this facility is built, you know, trucks are not going to be in there that often to worry about a backup beeper. And I think you're kind of pressed for room at that one bump out, at the beginning of the panels and on the back edge, it doesn't look like there's really room there to do a 360. She talks about a hiking path that cuts across the land, I assume that's land that the AWALS allow people to hike across, I'm not familiar with that, I don't know if it goes across where the solar panel is going to be, I got no idea where that hiking path is.
I mean, we're not aware of a hiking path either, so.
Okay.
And you show no, your research has shown no public light of way there?
No.
No.
I mean, that's something, neighbors have used a hiking pass, path in the past, and it's fenced in, that certainly is something they can talk to the AWALS about.
Right.
And she talks about, she doesn't think that there's going to be a 30-foot perimeter around the solar array as far as visual cover goes, there's not a 30-foot perimeter for us being left around all areas of the perimeter.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not quite sure what the 30-foot is referring to, I mean, we have zoning setbacks that we have to meet for structures, and I believe those are 15 and 20-foot setbacks, which, you know, the project does meet.
And I believe she was talking about, I mean, you were going to leave some tree, I mean, you're obviously going to have to cut some trees to get the sun down to the panels, but between the, you know, on the eastern perimeter, close to the, to those lots, the house lots, I think that's where she was concerned about it, that there's some trees beyond their property line, onto your property.
Yep, so what we propose there, and is in that area of the site that you just referred to, where the solar development is proximate to the two properties that are furthest north on Catherine Ave, we propose to leave a vegetated buffer of 15 feet wide of the existing forest vegetation, so we wouldn't clear to the property line there, we leave a 15-foot offset of existing vegetation. And then in addition to that, we're proposing a planting plan to provide additional visual buffer to the properties at that location, and that will be a mix of native evergreen and woody shrub species. Obviously, we didn't want to put plants that grow to a great height, that kind of defeats the purpose, but between leaving the 15-foot buffer and then proposing additional plantings in front of that, we, that was a proactive attempt to address visual concerns for those neighbors.
And then the plants you talked about, the native grasses, I think in your plan someplace it actually specifies what species of grass you planted, and she's just concerned that it's not an invasive species.
We would avoid invasive species.
She asks you about how many times the fields are going to be mowed, I can say maximum for two mowings per year, she's concerned that if it's not mowed enough, there may be a chance of a crash fire.
The two mowings, that's actually a DEP requirement, I think we talked about that last time, it's actually, the DEP requires that it not be mowed more than two times per year because for stormwater purposes, they want to keep a certain amount of vegetated cover.
Right.
So that language and that criteria comes straight from DEP.
Just to add, we also want to make sure that the grass doesn't get so high that it's actually coming above the panels, which are typically at the bottom or about two and a half feet above the ground, so there's the DEP requirement, but there's also the practical limitation that we would not want to let the grass grow any more than, you know, probably two feet, and that usually doesn't even happen anyway if we're, you know, if we cut it twice, but.
And that actually is one of our other questions, is, you know, do your mowing machines get onto the panels for the mowing grass?
It can, it can usually be a combination of machines, but there's sometimes some handwork that we do, our, you know, our mowing team will do a mix based on what's appropriate for, you know, how the, how things are configured, so they can, they do both as needed.
When the, when the ground that you're using is stumped, are the stumps disposed of on-site, chipped and disposed of on-site, or they hauled off?
Do you want me to help as a standard procedure?
Typically, they would be, I mean, we would coordinate that with the AWALS, and typically, they'd end up being hauled off, I would expect. I mean, it's not, it's not a, it's not something we've discussed in detail yet with Ken and Sharon, but we want to make sure we do what's acceptable to them, and also, you know, obviously be in compliance with whatever requirements we have, but I think typically, they would be, they would be taken off-site, but I don't want to speak too soon on that.
And maybe one thing to additionally specify about that is in the wetland areas where we're cutting vegetation, we're specifically not removing the stumps from those areas. Those areas are not going to be robbed, they're just going to, the trees will be removed for shade reduction purposes, but we don't disturb the ground surface, and we leave the stumps in place.
She asks about the metal supports that are used, if I remember correctly, I mean, you basically drill the supports into the ground, she asks, you know, what happens if they hit a boulder, do you remove the boulders through blasting or drilling?
So, the standard procedure is that they are driven in, they're with a small, essentially a, kind of a pickup truck-mounted pile driver, and if we do encounter refusal, we can turn to an actual screw, which actually has a diamond bit on it, and so that's what we use, if needed, you know, and that, you know, that's something where we'll probably do some further geotechnical investigation just to determine, you know, in more detail what the conditions are, although you guys have already done a little bit, so.
We did a soil investigation to support this application and the site law application, but it is typical for, to do a more detailed geotechnical investigation prior to construction to, for exactly that purpose, to get a better assessment of where a ledge may be, or, you know, impenetrable subsurface layers.
There's no blasting.
I guess, yeah, to better answer the question, no blasting, we don't blast.
I assume the DEP has a, determines whether you use any pesticides or herbicides on the property?
Right, we don't, we don't, we don't do that. We want, obviously, we want to encourage, anywhere we want regrowth, we want, we want things to grow, we want a completely grassed and vegetated area under the entire array.
What would you do if an invasive such as Japanese knotweed were to come into your recently cleared areas?
I can't say that I know that we've had that situation, I mean, we would, we would, obviously, we wouldn't want to see that, I guess it would have to be dealt with on an individual basis to see if it was really an issue, if it was an issue for the property owner. I mean, they've, they've certainly, they've cleared areas there before, I don't know that, I don't know that we anticipate that that's really going to be an issue, but.
She asks how the electricity is transferred, the underground lines to?
It's an overhead line that basically just parallels the existing access road that's already there, will connect to the existing versant distribution line on Route 1.
And there are poles there now, we may need to add poles, but there are poles already there.
Well, what about like from the solar panels to, you have a building on-site?
The panels, the panels to the combiners and the inverters is our underground lines?
That's right there. She asks about snow removal, nobody clears snow off, so the panels may not believe.
No, we, we don't, that's actually a good question, though, I mean, a lot of people would say, you know, maybe there'd be situations where you have to, but it, because of the, because of the tilt of the panels, it actually slides off fairly regularly, I mean, you could have an extreme event where you could have it, you know, get so deep that it could get to towards the bottom of the panel, but typically, we don't have to do any clearing of snow.
What's the most northern solar farm you guys have built or operated now?
Well, we actually have one at the, at the Portland jet port, and we also have arrays in southern Canada, and then obviously, we also have, we also have one that's actually near Lake Winnipesaukee in Moltenboro, New Hampshire.
And have those collectively been through a few winters?
Yes.
And have you had to do manual snow removal?
No, no.
She has some question about going green, but, I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to get into those, as where the solar panels are manufactured, the type of, the lifespan of solar panels, you know, how they're disposed of, I mean, a lot of that's written in the decommissioning plan.
Right.
So, I appreciate the letter from Ms. Ackerman, and thank you for your answers.
On that note, though, of going green, the, I know it's not a requirement of this application, but you are removing a fair amount of forested area, which, you know, trees are a carbon sink and help reduce CO2 in the atmosphere, has there been any studies regarding, you know, the lifespan of a project except for this, and what the net benefit is for greenhouse gas emissions?
Yes, there's actually even, there's an EPA calculator that you can use, and now I'm kicking myself, I should have, I should have looked at it today before I came up, but I don't have the specific numbers, but generally, and we get this question a lot, and it's a very valid question, you're cutting trees, you know, and we know that's, that's a, you know, it's an action that has an impact, but the, the offset of, in terms of greenhouse gas emissions or curtailment of those emissions, over the time, over the time of operation of the solar project is positive by a large amount. And it's something I could, I could point you to the, you know, the site where you can actually, you can get statistics on that, I just, I don't have anything off the top of my head, but.
Yeah, it's, again, it's not a, you can't condition approval of this project on anything like that, but if you could provide that, is this for my own interests?
Yeah, sure.
Specific, if you have calculations for this project, I think, I mean, we're seeing a lot of these projects in Ellsworth, and most of them require removal of forested partially or entirely, I think it'd be good for the public to be educated, so, I know, you know, we've had a number of projects, but I'm asking this developer if he could add it, and just be, I think it'd be helpful.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. Again, it's a, it's an important question to ask, you know, I mean, nothing that we do has no impact, you know, and we like to have as little impact as we can when we build solar, but we obviously don't have zero impact.
Yeah, everything has impact, but, yeah, if you could just, in that regard, I think that'd just be good for everyone to know. I also have a question, one of our members couldn't be here this evening for your project, he wanted to confirm that John Whedon was satisfied with the runoff issues and questions, does he have any issues with how the runoff from panels is treated? I think we've talked about it a little bit, that, do you know?
So, excuse me, so the Branch Lake Watershed steward, John Whedon, and I worked together to develop the conditions of approval in that language that will appear both in the operations and maintenance plan and as a note on the plan.
Okay, so he's satisfied with those, assuming those conditions are?
I think so, yes. Yes, and to the point about the grayness of significant storm events, I think, we have a, we do some weather monitoring at our wastewater treatment facility, so I think it will be based mostly on the quantity of rain in a certain period of time, and with all of the experience that he and that department have, is there likely to be an impact at the stage that this project is at with the revegetation? Okay, let's go request that we can check it out and make sure everything's okay.
I've got a question for Tom, I mean, there's been discussions back and forth about the road and how big it was originally proposed and what the size is now, so is the fire department satisfied with the way the road is being proposed now with the two turnarounds?
Well, Elena and I talked today, and there was a updated notice that was sent back to, back to them that needed to get updated with some wording change in the plans, and then we would feel comfortable once that's done for conditions of approval at that, for the road, for the, from Bucksport Road up to the house.
So is that something that's going to be on the site plan, on the mylar?
Yes.
Okay. And we have already made that change, and the language, I think, you know, we took straight from what was provided in the memo, so, you know, we're confident that it addresses that concern.
Now, I was going to ask Elena, would it be appropriate to put a condition on the site plan concerning the decommissioning plan being reviewed by city council?
So, if you, you mean, by city council, I want to clarify, you mean the attorney?
City counselor.
Yes.
Ed Behr.
Yes, so I have suggested a condition to be met prior to the issuance of a building permit that is providing that final, final assurance for the funds for decommissioning, do you mean the entire decommissioning plan or just the money part?
Well, the decommission, not so much the dollars and cents, but the performance bond exactly.
Yes, that's what I mean.
I mean, like the Tiverton, Rhode Island?
Yes, yes.
Bond, it's reviewed by Ed and meets his approval.
Yes, that's the.
I can put that in, in the motion to, if we move to accept it, I can put it in the motion.
Yeah, so the language that I suggested, if you, mine is pink, I think they should all be pink.
So on the very bottom, John?
At the very bottom, to provide financial assurance of performance in accordance with Chapter 56, Section 825, Point D, Point V, the planning department, and to the satisfaction of the city attorney.
Okay.
And if, if and when we get there, I do have one other condition that I forgot to include at the very end that I'd like to suggest.
A moment ago, you mentioned a memo, is, this memo that we're looking at, the pink sheet, this is dated today, so what memo are you referring to?
I advanced dated that.
Okay, so it's the same one?
They've seen this, yeah, this was provided last week, sorry about that.
On that condition, you say to the satisfaction of the city attorney, do you, you don't say that to the planning department, are you reserving the city attorney to have, the only one to determine they're satisfied with, or the planning department also have that discretion?
So, I think, you know, the planning board and the planning department generally has been through a few of these, but this is the first one that I'm seeing completed, so I think in the future, once I understand what the attorney wants to make sure is in or perhaps not in a performance guarantee, then I can probably handle it, but for now, I'm going to make sure that it's all in order to his satisfaction, does that answer your question?
Yeah, well, I'm saying, why don't we also allow you that discretion, too, I mean, if you can talk to Ed and?
Sure, I suppose you don't really need to say it.
Sure, I mean, if you don't want it, I think, you know, we want to make sure, Ed's coming at it from a legal perspective, but you have a planning perspective that he doesn't have.
I see. Oh, okay.
To the satisfaction of the planning department and to the satisfaction of the city attorney.
I see. That's a good idea.
So, yeah, I think if we do, if the board does approve it, I would suggest that amendment to that condition, that it also include to the satisfaction of the planning department.
Okay, this is a public hearing, any member of the public may comment upon this application, but before you speak, I ask that it be recognized by the chair, and then go up to the lectern and state your name for the record. Does anyone wish to speak? Seeing, hearing none, I close the public hearing, and so what would the planning board like to do?
I'll make a motion, excuse me, that we approve the final plan review for major use site development entitled Ellsworth Main Solar LLC. For Ellsworth Main Solar LLC, the proposal is to construct a 4.98 megawatt solar energy facility on a 48.68 acre parcel, tax map 30, lot 15, located at 889 Bucksport Road. All of the subject property is located in the rural and drinking water zones, with the condition to be met prior to the issuance of building permit in that the applicant provide financial assurance of performance in accordance with Chapter 56, Section 825, DV, to the satisfaction of the planning department and to the satisfaction of the city attorney.
Did you have, Elena, did you have something else?
There's several more about that, so I broke it into conditions to be met prior to the signing of plans, so I would make sure that everything is reflected on the plan before we bring the mylars to you to be signed, so if you could include those in your motion, too. I have a second one that could go with the conditions to be met prior to issuance of the building permit that we have discussed, I just forgot to put it on there, which would just be that a street name application approval be issued by the city assessor, it's not making it a It's not making it a new road. It's just that they need a name for E911 purposes.
Do you want me to read down through those, all the conditions?
Sure, and I can read the last one again if you need.
Revised, a condition that also prior to signing the plan, revise operations and maintenance plan to indicate that erosion and sedimentation control inspection requests by city staff following significant storm events will be accommodated for a minimum of two years post-construction. Next one is submit a copy of all required state federal permit applications to the planning department. Next, add a note to Sheet C 2.0, City of Ellsworth Water Department and/or code enforcement staff to attend quarterly and as needed inspections of erosion and sedimentation controls for a minimum of two years post-construction. See operation and maintenance plan. Next is revised note on Sheet C 3.1 regarding access road repairs up to residents. Existing driveway to remain, existing driveway to repair post-construction to meet Ellsworth Fire Department standards for fire apparatus access roads for Ellsworth City Ordinance and Codes, Chapter 4, Fire Protection Prevention, Section 3.14.1.1a. Next is revised site details Sheet C 4.1 to indicate 40-foot wide gravel surface on access road.
Twenty foot.
Twenty foot, sorry. I don't even know what I said. Revised site details, next one is revised site detail Sheet C 4.1 to show six-inch gap at base of perimeter fencing to allow for wildlife passage. And was there another?
So then, a second condition to be met prior to issuance of a building permit, street name application approval issued by city assessor.
What Elena said.
Thank you.
Second. I was just gonna ask for that, thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please?
Aye.
Okay. You can stay for the rest of the meeting or you can choose to go. We will not hold it against you if you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item in the business is a preliminary plan. Plan review for major use site development entitled BD Solar Ellsworth with BD Solar Ellsworth LLC. The proposal is construct a 3.3 megawatt solar energy facility on a 95-acre parcel, tax map 93, Lot 2, located on the Colon Road. The subject property is located in the rural and resource protection zones. Is someone representing the applicant, please?
Good evening. Sean Thies with Haley Ward and Audrey Puleo with BD Solar, ENRG, with me tonight. We were before the board last month for a sketch plan review of this project. Since that meeting, we've had some minor adjustments to our plan to reflect some additional wetland delineation work that was done on the site. Prior to the sketch plan, we had to make some changes to stay out of the resource protection zone and reconfigure the layout a little bit. So the plan that you now have is a little bit different than the plan from sketch plan. Essentially, it just sort of pushed the solar array a little bit further back into the site and narrowed it up a little bit to avoid wetlands and fit in between the wetland boundary in the resource protection zone. So it's currently about 17 acres is the footprint of the solar project within the 95-acre parcel. Additionally, we realized that the applicant name was incorrect. We had BD Solar Ellsworth and it should be BD Solar Nickelin LLC. And I brought copies of a assignment for the lease agreement. So it assigns the lease actually to BD Solar Nickelin LLC, so just to clarify that. And when we submit any new information for the final approval, we'll provide revised documentation for, as far as application, applicant, application form and fix those things on the plan so that it's clearly stated. I think we addressed all the TRT comments that we had and some of the things that were brought up at the meeting last, last month. We provided a plan, a location map, I should say, in your packet that better shows the relation of the site to Green Lake. See how that, how that works and Bog Brook gets the lake from the site. Be happy to, I guess in addition, there's a full stormwater report, which we didn't have prior to the sketch plan. The redesign put us over the limits for needing that, so we, we've provided that now. And we've addressed all the fire department's comments as far as road width and turnarounds and length of roads. I think we've addressed all the comments from staff. Anything that the board brought up at the last meeting, but be happy to answer any questions.
Okay.
Questions from the board? One question I have is in Appendix 1, I guess it is, no, Appendix I. MNAP correspondence, you have an aerial photograph of farmland soils for BD Solar Davis Road, Eddington?
Yes, that, that is, I think, the one item that was noted on staff. So we've, we've submitted several of these sites to Maine Natural Areas for Review and I believe in their response, they mixed up the, the map that they attached to our response letter with a different site. So I'm trying to get clarification from them in a revised letter.
Okay, so we would have?
I think, I think they provided two separate responses and one of them was correct. And then the other one, it referenced the correct project, but had the wrong, the wrong map with it.
I mean, you referenced the site and how Boggy Brook, how this impacts Boggy Brook. And firstly, I went to Google Maps to try and figure out exactly where Boggy Brook flows. It's sometimes hard to follow on Google Maps in correspondence with, with your site. What I'd like to see is something like this, this farmland soils, an aerial photograph that actually delineates your site and Green Lake and exactly where Boggy Brook flows. Because some of the wetland that borders your site, eventually I would assume would go into Boggy Brook or go into Green Lake. Is that a fair assumption?
Yeah, so we're looking at the site. I believe there's a wetland to the west of the site. I believe Boggy Brook is to the east of the site. The resource protection zone is around Boggy Brook. And I thought the location map sort of showed a better, it's a pretty long route.
Yeah, just the front, front flat of the.
Yeah.
Under that blue paper, I think?
Here?
Yeah.
It's not a very direct route from the site to Green Lake to follow Boggy Brook, but I thought it was fairly well-defined on that map.
I'll take a look at that.
So the correction of the name, I see there's several items that staff has worked on with you and are crossed off now. Are there any letters, correspondences, or approvals that you've received under the previous name that we need to get redone now that would basically invalidate these check marks?
I don't believe that we would need new letters. I mean, the site hasn't changed, so I mean, we're not reviewing a different site. My thought and just some email correspondence with Elena was we'll provide a corrected application so the applicant name is correct, and then of course the plans that are actually stamped. And I guess we could provide a full, a whole application book that corrects any names in there. If you want like sort of one final copy, I'd rather not, I guess, produce 10 copies just for that change, but whatever the board wants, I guess, to see.
Elena, are you comfortable with?
My main concern was just clearing up the right title and interest. I don't think that, you know, a letter.
Like the fire department letter and whatnot?
Yeah, that's not really affected.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just a reminder, I'm now on with the final application, just a sheet stating that the name change has been submitted in an application to the planning office. So that it clears up any question the board has that might have. I don't see any reason for you to make all those copies.
I, I don't either, but.
And I guess it'll be clear on the state permits?
Yeah, we haven't submitted the application.
And with all those copies, pizza won't be up.
I guess I've got a question for the board as far as the, getting back to Boggy Brook. I mean, I just soon get the board, peer review of, of that issue of how, if any way, this will affect the Boggy Brook flows. You know, is that something that inland fish and wildlife can look at or a water scientist? I don't know. You know, who would actually do that? But, I mean, I think this, I think this is very important. As close as, as the wetlands are to the site, you know, it is a long ways away from, from, from Green Lake. There is a significant amount further down towards the lake. I mean, there's been a significant amount of wood harvesting. But still, I think it's something that we really need to take a close look at.
So, so there's two layers here. There's the DEP with the permit by rule, which you could explain much better than I could. So your, that, that responsibility is on DEP. And then with the, with the change in the layout and the road, they are now meeting our threshold for the flooding control standard. So that's focused on quantity for stormwater. So that's the real, that's the thing that could be reviewed, I suppose, is those calculations and whatnot.
And will DEP's review go that far off-site to, to see how, if any impact there is on Green Lake?
No. So you guys are going for a PBR?
Yes, we're required to submit a stormwater permit by rule application to DEP, which they looked at the site. It's, it's essentially an erosion control, detailed erosion control plan and erosion control notes.
You said you were gonna do some chipping and that berm would stay around?
Yeah, so part of, we'll take the grubbings, the stumps from the site, ground that up. That'll be used for erosion control measures on-site. So we'll make berms, essentially where you would, could potentially see silt fence. We usually have an option of whether they install silt fence or use this material to create berms, which serves as the same, same purpose as silt fence to any of the runoff until the site's stabilized. It's filtered out through those bark mulch berms.
And will the berms maintenance be included in your maintenance plan?
So that they're required to be.
Going forward 10, 20 years?
The berms are there to be, and they're required to be maintained until the site is stabilized. So until there's grass growth on the site, they need to maintain all the erosion control measures on the site. So once grass is established on-site, then it becomes a meadow. So you shouldn't have to have those same concerns about erosion at that point once you have grass stabilized. But those berms, yes, will be maintained until the site is stabilized. So I think there's requirements, if you do get a bunch of sediment and it builds up more than half the height of the berm, that all has to be cleaned up and, and need to restore all those.
Who makes that determination when the stabilization phase is over?
So it's in the, typically in the, the erosion control plan, it describes what constitutes stabilized. I think it's like, essentially like a 90% cover of grass growth is considered stable.
So I think, to your question, John, well, I guess, keep in mind that we're preliminary, which I think is why that, you bring this up now. We don't have a city engineer, so you and I can try to review stormwater or any other engineering and, and understand it, but aren't explicitly qualified to do so. There's a kind of an in-between step we have here where, you know, with the previous project that we were just reviewing, the Branch Lake Watershed Steward was asked to have some input and be involved in inspections because it's in the Branch Lake Watershed partially and affects the drinking water supply. We had some preliminary discussion and technical review if you might be open to something like that as well so that there is a city role in ensuring that the vegetation is established and there aren't any erosion issues. So we could continue to discuss that as well if the applicant is open to it.
I would, I just, I guess one other thing, you had mentioned IFRW. Other than the letter that they have as a sign-off, but there's no protected species that were impacting and things like that. Typically, they request a hundred-foot setback from a stream if we were, if they're reviewing a project in more detail with actual plans. In this case, I think the stream where, where outside of the resource protection zone, which is, I think, most likely a 250-foot setback from that stream that constitutes Boggy Brook. So well beyond what IFRW would recommend if they were reviewing the project.
What's the nature of the wetlands that are near, these forested wetlands?
Just forest, yeah, forested wetlands.
And you're not disturbing any of them?
Correct.
So thus you don't need NERPA permit or anything like that?
Correct, there's no, no wetland permitting required.
And is your stormwater management plan consistent with the state best management practices?
Yes, so we, in this case, we're not submitting anything to the state beyond the stormwater permit by rule, but the city requirements essentially mirror the state requirements for what we're doing. So we've provided those calculations to meet that standard.
John, what I'm hearing is that they're satisfying stormwater management. They're not directly impacting the wetlands that immediately are on the property. And there's no, there's no resources of significance as identified by the state. So to answer your concern, my thought is, is that with all those, you know, considerations, I think it would be, considering that the city staff is now inspecting a number of these projects regarding confirming the stabilization of the plantings once the project's done, I think we, it'd be prudent and acceptable for the board to request that even though we're not in the drinking watershed to see if the applicant would be, would consider that and maybe bring it up if we do get through completeness review. Something you could consider and propose to the board for final review, something similar to the conditions in the previous project.
Yeah, I don't think that would be a problem.
Well, what about, I mean, a peer review just for the, just for the stormwater figures? Just for, you know, if they're stormwater and, not that I dispute you, but I would just have a peer review for, I mean, they say that it's not gonna impact the wetlands beside it. And we've asked for peer reviews in the past, I think this is, this particular site, I think, is important enough to take at least a, that step.
What do you mean by peer review, John, sorry?
Uh, just to turn it over.
Like a third party?
Yes, just to look at their stormwater figures.
Would it be appropriate for us to do a site visit for something like this?
Would it be appropriate for us to do a site visit for something like this? Just to see it and recognize it as an impacted space as this project moves forward?
It's appropriate to do it if the board agrees. Does anyone object to doing a site visit?
Will the city buy us all muck boots?
I don't object, I just, I presume the landowner hasn't started clearing any land yet. I'm not sure how much we'll see.
The landowner has been doing clearing sort of separate from unrelated to this project.
On, on this site though?
Yes.
And more just out of curiosity, when you're looking to invest in a project like this, from your standpoint, what type of, like, what made you choose this site?
Do you wanna speak to that, Holly?
Sure, so capacity is a big driver for selecting sites. So if there's available megawatts at a station, that's identified. And then the surrounding area, we sort of target parcels that look like they have agreeable slopes. So there's nothing like a cliff that we're having to build on and, and aren't able to. We do preliminary wetland assessments that are then validated by our environmental consultants. We do habitat initial screenings, sort of get a lay of the land and determine which site would be best for solar. Alternatively, a landowner may reach out to us and suggest their parcel, which was this case.
And do you often look at previously cleared sites or brownfields or spaces that you wouldn't have to deforest?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, I would say the, the preference is to find whether it's a, a field or, yeah, a brownfield site would be great. I mean, lots of landfills are looking for things like these, but that presents some other challenges when you're dealing with landfill caps and things, but.
And Sean, the current wood harvesting that is going on now, is, is that, looking at C-101, is any of that cutting taking place between the silt fence? I'm not quite sure what that lake grade boundary line is, but it then goes into the wetlands, the resource protection zone. Is any wood harvesting taking place?
I, I could not tell you where, where they are cutting exactly out there.
Do they have a harvesting permit?
It's, it's unrelated to anything that we're doing. He's cutting on his land. I don't know what permits he may have gotten from the city to do that or not.
And because we asked the last project, would you use any herbicides or pesticides to maintain vegetation, even if there was some crazy invasive that popped up? Never would. And would you be required to tell anyone if in some case, because it isn't in writing, if you did choose to use an herbicide or pesticide? Is that something we'd require?
I mean, I guess it could be a condition of approval that we don't use herbicides or pesticides on the property.
Seems like it should be for all of the projects, in my opinion.
Yeah, you're right.
Cause they're all saying they won't and I trust, I'd like to trust you. But invasives are real, especially if you're cutting other things down.
Anyone else? Questions?
Well, should we get back to John's question?
Mm-hmm.
Regarding peer review of the stormwater plan, is that, I think you should answer that before moving on as a board. And to clarify, the state, he doesn't have an engineer. So the review is our review of the plans, of the stormwater management plan and the staff's review.
You mean without a peer review, yes. It's to the extent that we're able to interpret and trust it.
If the board could require a peer review and then the responsibility for arranging that would be between the applicant and the planning department.
Mm-hmm, yes, so we.
So we don't actually have to worry about the details.
Yeah.
We can just say we want it.
You can certainly ask for it, that's completely within your rights. And, um, yeah, the applicant and I would probably come to a mutual agreement of a third party that would be acceptable and would reach out.
I mean, in this case, I, I think it's a criminal.
Unless the board agree and that could be put into the motion this evening.
Well, is it just a preliminary?
Yeah, but yeah, we were finding that the application's complete and at the same time and that requires the peer review, yeah. Okay, um, this is a public hearing. Anyone can comment on this matter. I ask that you be recognized by the chair, then come up to the lectern and identify yourself for the record.
Oh, before, oh, sorry, before we get that, Richard, Rick had a few questions that he emailed to us that I think maybe we should ask before, is he gonna be here before we go to the public?
As soon as we're finished here with these, yes, go ahead.
So his first question, he asked if Tom, you had, you reviewed the updated site plan. Are you, he wants to know if you're okay with the current plan?
Yes, every, all the stuff has been meant for the fire department and they've already received their letter from me.
Okay. And then he said, there had been discussion at the last meeting about the visual impact of the proposed development. Is the board satisfied that this issue has been appropriately addressed? Raise preliminary as a point to be discussed and get it on the record. What is the board's recourse if we don't like what this, or any development does to the visual landscape? So I wasn't at the last meeting, but I figured I'd put that out there.
If I'm not mistaken, Sean, didn't you commit to saying that it'd be a forested buffer along Nicolean Road?
Yes, we're required to have a thirty-foot buffer along the road. I went by the site before the meeting. Luckily, they haven't cut all the trees up to the road, so there's still vegetation left there. If required, we could add to what's remaining. But they haven't cleared out all the way to the road and the intention is to keep thirty feet.
And I believe that the last meeting, I don't know if the gentleman is here, but there was one gentleman who lived adjacent to it or somewhat close to it that I believe you met with him. He was worried about the visual impact from his house.
Yeah, I had some, I had some email correspondence with him. I believe I addressed his concerns, looking at his house. It's, it is, it does sit up over the site, but it's also surrounded by trees. So I'd have a hard time believing that, and he, he seemed to be okay with that, that he really probably can't see it from, the trees around his yard are gonna block his view from looking down to see any of the, the solar farm. I think some of the concern may have been more visual, driving by it along Nicolean Road.
And then Rick's last question, uh, kind of relates back to our stormwater management concerns. Has, has Mr. Whedon reviewed the current plans relative to the impact, especially on Green Lake? Do you know?
So at the last meeting, I think he was asked at least to take a look at it and be able to educationally speak to it. I'm not sure if he has reviewed it. He was at the, the technical review team meeting with us, but I'm not sure how closely.
Well, I think maybe, assuming if we do find it to be complete, maybe he could provide us something for the final review.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I think that addresses Mark's question, so. I think, I don't have anything else, if you wanna go to the public hearing.
Yes, if you'd like to step up.
My name is Dale Jellison. On August twenty-fourth, three of the people that spoke at the last meeting had the opportunity to meet onsite with Robert Cleaves, who is either the owner or an owner of, and I'm not sure if it's BD Solar or Derigo Solar. There's all sorts of names floating around. But anyway, Mr. Cleaves was kind enough to meet with us. And he very efficiently in an email to, to us, and that was Joe Kitchen and Audrey Tunny and myself that spoke at the last meeting, itemized the concerns that we expressed while we were on site on Tuesday, the twenty-fourth. I'd like to go through those briefly and make some comments. One of the things that we expressed and you have addressed is visual impact and the buffer. The clearing appears to have been done. Unfortunately, the wood clearing company took all of the major trees within that thirty-foot buffer. It's quite a mess and probably the biggest tree left there is about the size of your arm. They are maybe eight to ten feet tall and they will obviously grow. But visual impact because of the clearing appears to be, in my estimation, an issue. Going along with that and something that might be a generic comment for all of your solar projects is the decommissioning of a project that involved major clearing, such as this one and the previous project that you addressed tonight. Should you consider requiring in the decommissioning of a previously wooded site, the replanting of that site with seedlings? I think green or environmentally sound reasoning would prevail. I don't think the cost of that would be a deal breaker, but I think it would go a long way in twenty or thirty years from now of recapturing that property back to a natural forest. Stormwater concerns was the second item. It wasn't clear, and I brought up the subject the last month, of whether there is in the stormwater erosion control plan a retention or a detention pond. And unfortunately, Mr. Cleaves was not in the know on that subject. Is there some sort of a detention pond or retention pond?
No.
No. Clarifying the Boggy Brook, I believe there is another, maybe it's in the wetland, and I believe it's called No Name Brook, that, that does flow, I believe, into Boggy Brook. So when you study your plans for flowage, you should look for that other, other, um, stream that's, that's on the site. It's obvious from looking at the site, and if you do make a visit, you will see, especially in the woodyard where, when we were there a week or so ago, the harvested trees had been piled up in a barren ground area, that there are significant, typical of Ellsworth and Dedham, significant amount of surface boulders, which would lead me to believe there's also a significant amount of underground boulders. The previous applicant did address how they do that. I want to be sure that this developer is not doing any blasting or grubbing or excavating of those rocks. How do they intend, intend to handle the, the numerous boulders that are obviously on this site? That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Yes. I wonder if Sean could answer the question, how about the boulders?
Sure.
I'd like to.
Wait.
Include the public hearing, yeah.
Hello, my name's Mary Ellen Hunt. I have not seen anything on this. I did get the previous notice to me in time to attend the previous meeting. I believe I'm a budding property owner to this site. I have a couple of different concerns. What it will do to my property as far as value, visual. Will it impact groundwater if I wanna put a well on it? I'm also concerned, is there any noise that comes off these solar fields? That, you know, someone would be, if you're living next door, you're gonna hear it snapping? Or are the lines that they're probably gonna run diverse, and I'm assuming? Are you gonna hear things like you're, via power line? I'm also concerned about the erosion, very much so, because I live on the lake, so I'm also concerned about the lake. And I drive in and out that road all the time. Just last, last year in the spring, that road in that area was barely passable cause it flooded so bad, because they'd been logging in there and it causes that. And they are logging now between that property and the lake, cause I sit on my porch every day and hear the saws going all day long from the logging companies. So I don't know how much they're clearing in there. They've cleared quite a wide road in, just above the lake. I assume that's the current logging company that's in there. But there's a lot of, I'm concerned about the runoff to the lake. I'm concerned what it will do to my property from many different factors, so.
If I may comment, the issue of property values is not something that the board is empowered to deal with. It's helpless there.
Yeah, but I, I'm assuming you're still concerned about the visual. And like I said, I haven't heard anybody to say anything about whether there's noise that comes off these fields at all.
As far as the clearing and that, that is not, that is something beyond the applicant's control. That would be just the same as if your neighbor had done that and there was nothing before the board. So any remedies that you may have, you still have.
Yeah. Do, do they look at the effect on the road being washed out though from?
Again, that's not, it's not caused by the applicant. So his erosion sanitation control plan will address what the city requires it to address.
It doesn't have, doesn't look that far to whether it will cause flooding on the road even worse than what we now experience?
I can't answer that off the top of my head. But that will, questions as the adequacy of their plans would be for the next meeting for the final review. Technically, this meeting is just to determine that the applicant has met all the requirements that need to be brought before the board, that is, the application is complete. It's not, and finding completeness is not in itself addressing the adequacy of the, of the materials. Just that we have it, um, so.
But on that note, the lower code enforcement, do you get any kind of, when people do timber harvesting on their properties, what, is there any requirements with the city in that regard?
It's just sent to us from the forestry department that they have applied for it and just to give us knowledge of it. So when, so, you know, people will call and say they hear, you know, sawing and they see logs being taken out and that type of thing. So we have it on file and I think this particular one is almost a two-year stretch.
Yeah, it's, the sawing is constant.
So is, now if someone comes to you, concerns like this regarding the impact of foresting operations, what's the standard procedure?
I would have them contact the forestry department.
The, the state of Maine forestry department?
Cause that permit came through them, not through this.
So they, so the issue is it's, they're kind of two separate things.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying now, yeah.
And now this is a solar, separate solar application. You have, you have, any rights you have still exist in.
Yeah, is it just, when you start looking at everything that's going on as far as how it's affect, gonna affect the lake, I think is, is the big concern. You've got multiple people in there clearing land for different purposes. And is it looked at on a totality?
I think our review is, is limited to the solar project's proposal and how the solar project impacts. project impacts stormwater. So we can't now also look at the timber harvesting. They're two separate views, but that doesn't mean you can't contact the state.
Yeah.
To be clear, though we're not judging, to be clear, though we're not judging the merits of the application tonight, just the completeness, noise ordinance, stormwater runoff and erosion, those are issues we generally concern ourselves with and will be, will be things that we'll handle. And the project plan does need to account for those.
So is there anybody that looks at the multiple projects going on in this area and the impact on the lake? Who does that?
I can just say it's not the planning board. Beyond that, I really don't know. Also, as I recall, the, it's not exactly a permit from forestry. It's notification that you're required to give so for their statistical analysis, so they know how much wood of what type is being harvested.
They have to get a harvesting number from the forestry department. It'd be up to the forestry department to review their cutting practices, if they're cutting too close to the stream, to the lake. This piece of property, the solar farm is going on, is about 95 acres. I think the wood cutting that you may be hearing is further towards the lake.
It is further towards, well, on both sides. They're cutting further towards the lake and they're cutting, then cutting up in this area too.
I know Versum and Phase Three, which is an electrical contractor who builds power lines, and I'm not sure if this is, they're cutting a power line in to connect to your facility or something else, but I know Phase Three and Versum is.
There's multiple projects.
Boggy Brook area doing some work.
Yeah, there's multiple projects going on in that area, and that piece of property has been cleared. I don't even, I don't, I've heard you mention 30 feet back from the road, but I don't even know if there's 30 feet of trees left there from the road. I don't even know if they left 30 feet.
And the applicant will be planting some trees.
It's pretty close. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone, yes?
My name is Joe Kitchen, and I live on Green Lake. I've lived there for 35 years, seen a lot of changes. And my biggest concern is for the applicant, have you folks been up to look at that? You know where that is or is that, can I address him or should I address the board?
Just take, address us.
All right, well, has anybody been up to see it?
From?
From the city, city councilors, any board members?
No, because we're, that's one of the things we're going to be setting up as a site visit.
Well, I agree with Molly, what she said, and I think it would be, it's hard to describe this area. It is surrounded on three sides by a brook, wetlands, a big hay, which is, they say there's 95 acres there, but I dare say half of that's got to be wetlands. And they said they couldn't leave a buffer, but there was a tree there bigger than my wrist. They were right out, we met with Bob Cleaves up there, Audie and Dale, and he was amazed that they took every merchantable tree that was there. There is nothing left up there. You look on the other side of the road and they left, you know, pretty good-sized pine trees, fir trees, that were not really sellable, I guess would be the word. But this side is completely gone. There's, they said they were going to have a 30-foot buffer, but man, you could throw a cat through there anyways. There's just nothing left there. And with that unnamed brook, Boggy Brook is on the west side. Unnamed Brook is on, or excuse me, yes, Boggy Brook is on the west side, and that unnamed Brook is on the east side. So they kind of parallel each other, one being on this side, one there. And then they come around and they meet on a, like a peninsula. So I look up solar array and it explains what they are. And then the, in the next paragraph, it's all about erosion. And that really is my main concern here, is the aesthetics and the erosion. Because I just, if we get a bad storm, maybe like a hurricane coming through, you know, dropped eight, nine inches of rain, we're going to be screwed. Pardon my French, but it's going to go right into Green Lake. And I really would like to see you folks take a hard look at this, like Blue Hill has put a moratorium on all of their solar panels. Buck Sport just turned down one. And there was an article in the Bangor Daily that quoted Bob Cleaves saying, I've got the paper, by the way, here, that there's an embarrassing amount of money that's given out for these solar farms. And I know everybody wants to make a buck, but it's pretty tough on my end to have to drive by that and see that every day. So it's basically all I got to say.
Thank you. My thoughts are, the applicant will have to establish a buffer. If it's not, something's not there, then it has to be done in order to be approved. Obviously, the buffer will not be instant, but the plans need to show that one will The clearing is done by the property owner. What's there is there. I don't know. The applicant is responsible for the area that he's in control of, and beyond that, the applicant has no responsibility. It's not a great situation, but the planning board is limited into what it can review and require. So.
We also don't have the authority to do a moratorium on anything. That's something the city council would have to pass. We, we're the, we call the balls and strikes for land use development projects. The city council enacts the ordinance that tells us how we're supposed to look at these projects. Our job is to look at these projects with those ordinance in mind. So questions, these bigger, broader questions may be more appropriate for the, to be raised with the city council.
Now, does anyone else wish to speak? I shall close the public hearing. And board, did you have any response to some of the comments that have been made?
Sure, I can go down through a few of them. I think you've addressed the buffer requirements. We'll obviously meet those if we need to plant more. We'll plant more. But like you said, it's going to take time to grow in. I think there's a lot of trees left there. They may not be big trees, but they're going to grow in over time as well, so. So there's no intention to do any blasting out there, just similar to what the previous applicant said. These panels are also supported by either driven posts or essentially screws that are put into the ground. Occasionally, there could be a boulder that needs to be moved to work around, but I say a boulder or rocks, something like that might need to be moved, but there's no intention to do extensive grading or anything like that on the site or go in there and dig out all the rocks. They'll screw into the ground when needed and screw into rock when necessary. There's not really any groundwater impacts related to solar. So I don't think that's a, I don't think that should be a concern with anybody that there's going to be impacts to the groundwater which could potentially impact somebody's We've talked about visual noise. There's, we addressed noise in the application. The only thing that makes noise on the site after it's constructed is the transformers and inverters have a slight hum similar to a refrigerator or something like that if you're standing next to it. I think the calculations that we've shown in the application is well within the, the noise ordinances for the city. Erosion, we are going to have, like I said, we'll have an erosion control plan. The erosion control plan is going to be reviewed by the city. It's also going to be part of our stormwater permit by rule application that goes to DEP. So those measures will all have to be maintained throughout construction until vegetation is established, and those will be replaced as needed. Once the site is, grass growth is established on site, just like the other project, it'll be, it's not necessarily a requirement for this site, but the plan is not to mow it any more than two times a year. There's no benefit to the applicant to go out there and maintain this as a lawn, to spend money cutting the grass all the time. It's really just to keep it from interfering with the solar panels. I think that's it.
Any further comments, questions from the board?
As you stump that location, I mean, here's when the stumps from the location, I mean, he boulders rocks, like, there's probably not going to be too many rocks left there when you grass it, because if you do get somebody to mow it, I mean, I mean, most solar farms I've seen, it's a nice grass field. So I'm a little concerned about the boulder aspect of it and that, well, there may be some remaining. I mean, I can't picture a solar farm with a whole bunch of boulders right in the middle of it.
No, but I guess, I mean, I don't, we'll learn more, I guess, on the site walk to see what the extent of the actual boulders are. Yeah, some of the boulders, I mean, you might have to move some of these rocks out of the way, but we're not going to go in there and just dig out rocks to dig out rocks.
How about removing stumps? You're taking them offsite to the landfill?
The stumps, no, the intention is to grind all the stumps and grind any of the wood waste and use it for the erosion control measures.
Thank you.
Similar to the last applicant, I would be, it's not a requirement, but if you have a way to calculate the net greenhouse gas benefit of this project using the EPA program, otherwise I'd be interested in seeing that public with as well. Again, it's not a requirement, the ordinance, but request.
So what would the board like to do now?
Shall we plan a site visit?
Well, applicant and the city plannership arrange something and give us our choices.
Will do.
Maybe we should determine whether it's complete before we.
It looks complete.
Well, even if it's incomplete, we can still do the site visit. They're separate, so it's us.
Sure.
Any comments from staff?
I think that sketch plan review was beneficial and it is very complete now, so I'm happy with the motion for that and.
Sketch plan or preliminary plan?
Well, complete preliminary plan, but I think going through a sketch plan review was beneficial. And just to not forget, if you have decided about a peer review, to, I think you were going to include that in your motion.
And I will make a motion that will fund preliminary plan review for major use site development titled BD Solar Elza for BD Solar Elza LLC to be complete. The proposal is to construct a 3.3 megawatt solar facility, energy facility on a 95-acre parcel, tax map, 93 lot two, located on Holm Road. Subject property is located in the rural and resource protection zones with condition that stormwater is undertaken through a prior review.
I'll second it. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of completeness and peer review? Thank you. Your talk is over.
You get the, you get the road system, if they do a site?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah. A button notice.
Oh, okay, great, great. That's my son.
It went for a minute, couldn't much really.
Thank you.
Yeah, but on the site visit, publicly attend.
Right.
But it's, can only observe.
Oh, yeah, no, keep my mouth shut.
Sure does.
Baby, yeah.
We shall wait for.
Well, we're also.
Oh, had it happened.
Nailed it. Perfect. Thank you.
The next item of business is the final plan for a major use site development, a major subdivision entitled 64 Pine Street for Otis One LLC. The proposal is construct a 12-unit residential building on 0.37 acres, tax map 134, lots 91 and 104, located at 64 Pine Street and 33 Struis. All the subject property is located in the downtown zone. Is someone representing the applicant here?
Yes. Hi, everyone. Chip Pascal with Haley Ward, also a man that probably needs no introduction, but John Bayes here with Opus One. Excellent, so I can give a brief presentation for the project if that's up in the direction, I imagine?
Well, we have quite a bit of correspondence we've gotten.
We sure do.
Which seems to contradict the assurances given us at the last meeting about working with the surrounding property owners. I would like, I wish I had the time before this meeting, since we just got these in the last couple of days, to address some of these concerns, some of which are beyond the purview of the planning board, and some few are. Therefore, I would like to do, I'm going to make a motion that we table this until next month, during which time we can set a study of the letters that we received and provide answers to these people. And hopefully by that time, everyone can be a little happier. Is there a second to my motion? It's like it fails for lack of a second.
Can I clarify what you're suggesting is that we don't discuss this at all right now?
Yeah, retable it. We don't, we don't hear this this evening.
And do you feel that it's, it's not even worthwhile to like, address as a group the comments first and then see where that goes?
Well, in that case, we would have to continue with the public hearing. My suggestion is, remains that we table this until next month. In the meantime, I will further study the letters we've gotten and clarify what is planning board issue, what is. the letters we've gotten and clarify what is planning board issue, what is not. You don't have to agree with me. It could fail for lack of a second. Hearing no second, the motion fails. Okay, let us continue. Go ahead.
Do you want me to introduce the project or do you want to...
I think you, yeah, you can certainly give an update. I think you all might want to report on the site visit, too.
I think it'd be helpful to present on the project. We can discuss the site visit and then maybe Elena can help us work our way through the historical issue.
Yes, I think that's probably the largest concern on the table.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that. I wasn't at the last meeting. I appreciate going through the plan.
Okay. Yeah, so what you have here, again, since some of you haven't learned at the last meeting, I'll start from scratch. But this is a project located at 64 Pine Street. Pine Street being on the right-hand side of the screen and Spruce Street on the left. The proposed building, it's actually on two parcels. We have a parcel that actually fronts on Spruce Street, which will be the proposed parking lot. And on the parcel with the frontage on Pine Street would be the proposed building. Proposed building is a 12-unit apartment building, three-story apartment building. Basically identical, at least in size, to the previous developments that Mr. Bates has taken through to completion already. So we have here again 12 units. We've got 18 parking spaces proposed in that parking lot. The main entrance would be from that parking lot. However, there is a door proposed onto the sidewalk on Pine Street. We, since the last, I guess, the most recent changes, not that I think, I think this was actually part of the last, last meeting, but we did reorganize the crash pickup situation. Originally, we came in with a dumpster. It's typically just the easiest, but we just don't have a lot of room for it on the site in conjunction with adding that handicap parking space off of Pine Street. So with both of those, we really ran out of room and instead opted to utilize a trash bin pickup area. So there'll be a fenced-in, you know, screened area where there'll be some, some trash bins that will get wheeled out, not for city pickup. That'll be private collection. But that, that will be located directly in front of that handicap parking space you see just below the building. And let's see, what else? We are proposing a feditated underdrained soil filter, which is on the lower left of the parking lot. That is for stormwater quality treatment. In general, this site was two existing structures with driveways and parking areas. So we are having a very modest increase in overall impervious surface when you're comparing pre-development to post-development. So given the small size of the parcel and the small increase in impervious surface, we are creating what we have to there for sure and staying beneath the flooding standard that the city Ellsworth has. So we're not required to meet that standard. Lighting is minimal, just, I believe, two lights in the parking lot and then a couple of wall packs located above each door. So those will be, those all meet the city Ellsworth standard. There should be a lighting plan provided as well that shows what the projected lumen counts would be at the property line as well as throughout the rest of the property. Other than that, I think that's about it. Happy to answer any questions.
One of the comments, I can't remember from which lady, had to do with how close the building was to Pine Street. After the site visit, I actually went back after I got that letter to look, to see how some of the houses on Pine Street, and some of them are quite close to the street itself. Actually, the one just down below that's from where Mr. Bates set the columns for the location of the building. This building would actually be further away from the street than the next door. One of those happens to be an apartment house. And I think one of the concerns of some of the neighbors was that this is a big apartment house. You know, there are some apartment houses on the street, obviously not of this nature. Is there room on the lot to push the building back a little?
Yeah, yeah, I think a little bit. Yeah, I think, I think we can slide that back a little bit. What we're trying to balance, right, is the accessibility of that building from both sides. The further back we push that, the harder that transition is and the more steps up it is from the parking lot area. So we're trying to kind of balance that. But yeah, I think there's a little bit of room for us to push that back.
Well, on the trash bins, so these are going to be, you know, like 35 gallon type trash bins, like you're talking about wheel-in. But I guess I'm a little concerned, but it's not a big trash bin, but there's still going to be a commercial truck picking them up, presumably parking on Pine Street. I'm not sure. There's some areas on Pine Street that are no parking. I'm not sure if, I don't recall if this is that close to High Street. But I mean, how often would trash pickups normally take place? You know, you're going to be parking, the trash truck is going to be pretty much taking over half the, half the Pine Street, very close to the High Street. So I just wonder if you could talk about the trash pickup a little.
Sure. You want that one?
Yeah, I mean, it would be, I would assume that probably once a week would be adequate. I mean, that's what we do at the other...
Excuse me. We'll use a sign and slap. Or leave the room, please. Thank you.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
So, yeah, once a week would probably be adequate for trash pickup there.
I mean, is that the absolute and only place you can locate those transit, do it like in the parking lot itself or...
It seemed to be the best place and not the only place, but I suppose it could be moved to the Spruce side. I mean, one thing that I thought through after somebody recommending that we move the building further back towards the Spruce side would be do a little retaining wall there and gain some more space, which we can certainly do. And maybe that would leave some, some space or some trash pickup there.
Spruce Street?
Off from Spruce Street in the parking lot side, yeah. Instead of Pine Street, especially with a private pickup situation, because they'd be able to pull into our parking lot and then, and then, you know, execute the trash disposal from there.
I mean, in my mind, that'd be preferable to get, even though trash may only be once a week, I mean, certainly preferable to me to, to see it take place somewhere in the parking lot.
Yeah, yeah.
And some of the correspondence or maybe the letter from Richard, he asked about the sewer line that may or may not have been, if you're here, the preliminary, that the sewer line may or not have been coming under Sargent Real Estate onto the property. I know in the site visit, Mr. Bates talked about that an excavator went down about six feet into the, into the Spruce Street side and could not find any sewer line or...
Storm drain. Any. Storm drain, yeah.
And yeah, what you'll find, we have just approximated the general location just from the map that Lisa had provided us at one of the TRTs, but you'll see a couple of dash lines running right through here. That's just sort of an approximation of where that line is supposed to be.
Yeah.
And there's a note on there that just says that, you know, we'll, we'll work with the city to locate that and provide access, you know, that they need to.
And I guess, maybe if you could just go over a little bit of your landscaping plans?
Yeah, I mean, so there's no landscaping standard. I think that's important to, to point out, but, you know, certainly we want this to look, look good. And, you know, as pointed out, I think in the last meeting, to utilize some, you know, some salt-resistant, you know, plantings, things like that. So we are looking at some salt-resistant dogwood trees located both in front of the building, on your side and out near the road. The soil filter will have ventilation in it anyway as part of that. And then some, some other buddy shrubs planted in front. So trying to, trying to provide a little bit there, but we're also cognizant of the need for snow storage, you know, in those green areas as well, so.
Perhaps we were given some information tonight on, I guess, architectural aspects of the building. Maybe you could go over some of those. Sure, the big issue to some of the neighbors are how this fits into the, to the area, to historic homes in the area. You know, instead of just being a box.
Sure. Is that something that, Elena, you want to preface any of this conversation? You want me to sort of go into what we're proposing?
What would you like?
Because there is a little bit of color that I think Elena could add here that might be helpful.
Okay. Well, I'll step back a second. There's not no landscaping standard. There are landscaping standards in the downtown zoning district. If a building is set back less than 30 feet from the front property line, they do not have to provide landscaping. So there's an argument as to whether this property has two fronts, but even if Spruce Street is also a front, they need their entrance and exit. So I'm, I was very particular about that single tree. There's also, I think, it's a shame that the existing trees that are intended to remain aren't shown on this plan, but there are a number of existing trees that, that are intended to be maintained.
Yeah.
And look like they will be safe to survive the construction and disturbance.
Correct.
So I just wanted to note that. So...
The planning board members that are at the site visit saw those trees and they are, there are a number of them and they are mature trees along, along the property line and on Spruce Street.
Yeah. So with regards to architectural, I think you're free to talk about your intentions. There's been a lot of public comment received on that topic. So I think the context is to be clear that we do not have any design guidelines in the site plan review or subdivision regulations. Some communities may. It's a, it's a thing you can do. Ellsworth does not currently have anything that stringent. The city of Ellsworth does have a historic district. It has kind of two layers of historic preservation. There's a defined historic district, which is basically like around this building, the church, the old jail, whatnot. And then there are locally listed historic sites. This is all overseen by the local historic preservation commission. So there are regulations there that apply to that small district and those specific properties which are identified by address, map and lot, everything. That list does grow from time to time, but it is, you know, all of them pretty much fit on the page. So this property is not in either of those lists or, you know, the district or the list. So there's been some assertion made, well, why not just apply the standards here so that you don't fall out of step with the properties next door that are on the list? My concern is that that would have the effect of creating a historic district where one does not exist. The line needs to be drawn somewhere. A property owner shouldn't need to look to his neighbor's house to know what regulations he'll be subject to. So I think any, you know, certainty that you can provide the public about what's intended for this building will make people feel more comfortable. However, the, the standard that we have to look to with the planning board's regulations, there's not much that that information can inform. I think the, the only real finding before you, whether you want to move forward with a conditional approval tonight or next month, is a state-imposed subdivision review criteria that says that a project should not have any undue adverse effect on aesthetics or historical sites. My impression, from the meaning of those words, from what I, my little knowledge of case law at this point, is that that has to be pretty extreme. It's not a standard that you use to say everybody needs to look the same. So that, if you do choose to move forward, or when you choose to move forward with an approval, if you do, I would suggest making a clear finding as to that. You know, you each may have different feelings about it, but I, I would encourage you to discuss it thoroughly and make sure that your decision is backed up.
But now we're, I understand all the emails have come through, but we're still waiting for the state historical...
Right, thank you.
Society Association.
Yeah, thank you for...
To issue their opinion.
Yes, and I think that the engineer can give you an update on that, too. So that's a standard requirement of all, basically all applications that they reach out to the main historic preservation commission for their comment. If there's a historic or archaeological site, you know, on the site or in the immediate vicinity that might be impacted by the proposal, I believe the applicant has to provide a certain amount of information to the historic preservation commission about what the project is. They go through their files. I don't think that they're looking at our local listings. They may, those may be in their files. And they usually respond fairly quickly with a response, you know, no, no, no real issue or perhaps consider this. Haven't seen anything like that recently, but...
But generally speaking, they don't say, okay, there's a couple historic houses right across the street, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
So worst-case scenario, do they say, this structure is totally out of character for the neighborhood based on the two houses across the street? It shouldn't be built.
So I haven't had that experience, but I also, you know, I've been in a different state for quite a while. I did have an experience in a different community in Maine that dealt with a nationally listed private property that was undergoing changes to the single-family home but was in a shoreland zone. And so their planning board and everything. And that, that turned into a pretty significant review based on the historic preservation commission's response. Kind of inspired the planning board to require an archaeological dig. And, I mean, this was a house from like 1710. So totally different, but they may come back with some illuminating information. We just don't have it. So...
We don't have any information yet as to when we're going to get that letter from?
No. I had, we've been working back and forth with them. There's been a few, few communications back and forth on that, just requesting some additional information. We've been prompt with that. Our last communication with them, at least back to them, was a week ago Monday. So my last call with them earlier this week, they said they were backed right up. Didn't think they were going to get to it this week. And she was headed on maternity leave. So it looked like it was going to be a slow, a slow process. She wasn't making any guarantees for me. But that's, they are, there's, I'm expecting them to render their opinion on, on the compatibility, I guess if you will, of this, of this project. It's not, they have, I'm sorry.
Timeline, please. She said she wasn't going to be able to give you anything really soon.
Yeah.
But you're, are you talking a month from now, two months from now?
I suspect, I would, I would have to hope. I couldn't nail her down to any sort of date, but she was, she was hopeful, you know, we could have, have an agreement between her or her, her boss who was going to be picking up her workload while she was on maternity leave, that that, you know, we could be able to get something in the next month.
Okay.
But, yeah, it's, she was also clear that, you know, really, they have no jurisdiction over this. But also certainly given the, given the statute, they're being asked to render their opinion. And that's really what it is, is their, their sort of opinion. So, but that is what we're waiting on.
If planning board approval were obtained and if permitting was attained, when do you plan to start construction?
At this point, it wouldn't be until next, next spring, I imagine. But I think certainly if we had conditional approval, we'd, we'd have to wait till, wait for that MHPC letter anyway.
So I might suggest maybe a blending of ideas here. So I might suggest maybe a blending of ideas here. Often we'll do a conditional approval. In this case, maybe we just don't do a conditional approval, we just don't do an approval, and we defer it till next month.
I don't know.
We're waiting, we're waiting on this piece anyway, and they're talking about next spring.
We originally were going to start middle of September, but given the current stuff, we're probably going to postpone the project and likely postpone it for two or three years and maybe not do it at all. So it's incredibly frustrating, but it's okay. And it's a shame because there's an incredible need for housing downtown, and we tried to do it aesthetically pleasing with the neighbors, and apparently, you know, we bought the asset, we targeted this asset back in December, and we went to work right away. And now we are 10 months later, still trying to get an approval and missing that mark. We met with the heart of Ellsworth, you'll see on page seven of this packet way back in March. We gathered all kinds of local people that were, had interest in the project. We tried to comply with how they wanted to see the building facade. We changed it, we manipulated it, we've had numerous emails back and forth. I like to think that we do a good job doing that, and apparently we don't. So, you know, it's a failed project in my mind. It's too bad. I've got a half a million dollars sitting on that site in radical transparency, and it's really, really, really irritating that that site is fully permitted, zoned, meets all the ordinances, and this is the hill we have to climb. And it's a disappointment, to say the least.
I don't think we need to delay this, and this is irrespective of your comments here. I was going to say two things. One, I think Elena provided a very helpful summary of the historical requirements under our ordinance. And as Elena describes it, correct me if I'm wrong, Elena, there's no, this specific site, nothing about it is historic as far as anyone's designated it.
It's not listed in the Historic Preservation Commission's ordinance. One of the burdens of proof is supposed to identify anything that might be in the comprehensive plan, but the buildings are gone. So if it was... So I don't know for sure because I'm not the expert on that, but...
Again, we targeted this asset, both these houses, and the city was very much in favor of us tearing them down right away because there was numerous vandalism going on inside of it. There was drugs and human feces inside of the building, and they wanted us to tear it down right away. And we did it as soon as possible. Again, it was a well-targeted zone, and I think when we were at the site visit, at least from all the planning board members that were there, they agreed what a, what a great spot for, for what we're doing.
Yeah. Allow me to just, I'm going to get through this. So this property is not designated on the National Register of Historic Places, correct?
That's correct.
And it's not designated by the local Historical Society?
Correct.
Okay. So most of these provisions don't apply to this property, is my interpretation of the ordinance. The only, Elena, correct me if you think I'm wrong. I read all this, the only provision that this applies to is subdivision, chapter 28, article one, subsection 1.8. The subdivision will not have an undue adverse effect on, and there's a number of standards, and one of them is historic sites. So I think we can interpret that either to apply just to this property itself within the confines of the lot lines, or at most, we can say, okay, well, does it have an undue adverse effect on the nearby historical property? Undue adverse effect is, it's not defined in the ordinance, but it connotes an undue adverse effect. Like, is this building's construction going to physically harm the other, these historical properties? No, it's not going to. This is a three-story building, and the correct, is this what you're proposing for?
That's the new rendering that we're going to send in to the Historical Society, given the fact that we're trying to just comply and meet with the neighbors and go over some different renderings that some other neighboring properties had input on, that we listened to, and some of which are listed on the right-hand side.
And none of this is required under our ordinance, correct, Elena?
Correct.
All right. So this is all you after meeting with all the neighbors?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
May I interject here?
You may.
Thank you. I'd like further definition on these pages.
Sure.
So the first page is the rendering from the north side of the building?
It's facing Pine Street facade.
Okay, that's facing Pine Street?
Yeah.
Okay. And then page two would be facing the parking lot?
No, 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 I'm sorry. This is just some of the correspondence back and forth, different renderings we sent in to different people to see if they had any input.
I see.
And then, as you continue to flip through, you can see their input on top of it. Some from the Artsen family, and I think the heart of Ellsworth probably had some input as well as we were dealing with them. And if you flip to the back pages, you can see architectural elements of Ellsworth prepared by Betsy Artsen in February. And she gives some insight on some windows and the six-over-six grids, which we now applied to the front of the facade, and a more tall, skinny-type window in nature. And then, as I, as I stated, on the right-hand side, you can go down and see what we, what we proposed to add to try and make it more historic in nature with the raised panel shutters, the columns, the detailed corner trim, it's 16 inches in nature versus a small corner. And one of the things that came up was the particular siding we proposed, and I guess everyone that we met with was pretty confident that they wanted to see clapboard siding, so we went with that to comply with that. We went with large freeze trim, which is, you know, in compliance with older architecture in Ellsworth. As you'll see, as you flip through the back pages of some other houses that are some in Ellsworth, some not in Ellsworth. And again, just trying to listen to the neighbors and see if we can make everybody happy. And that's what we're trying to do. And if it, if you want to table it and wait another month, we'll table and wait another month, but we're wasting time and money, my money, too. So...
So is that, did you just hand that out, or is that from last month?
This came tonight.
You just, do you have a copy to me? And I should have...
Thank you.
Okay. Well, then you can have. I probably should have been more clear. Part of the requirement talks about properties that are eligible to be listed, so I'm not sure. I think you'd know if something is eligible to be listed because something happened or... So that's where my hesitance is of the part that's not clearly on a list or not. That's all.
Clearly, this property that we're discussing this evening is not eligible because there's nothing there.
Right.
So I just, so back to, my point is, is that we can only, again, we can only apply the standard that we can apply under the ordinance. This is all beyond what's required. All that's required is we confirm that there's no risk of undue adverse effect on a historic site. I don't, I, having reviewed this application, there's nothing in here that gives me concern that constructing this, an apartment building on the property would unduly adversely affect neighboring historic properties. And if that were the case, then you couldn't build anything next to any historic property. We're not talking about a skyscraper, we're not talking about a wind farm, you know, it's housing. And as we all know, that's a critical need. Again, that need is aside from our job here, but, again, I can't vote tonight, but my two cents is that there's no undue adverse effect. You know, we can wait, I suppose you could have a condition to wait for the state to, you know, provide its statement of position on this, but I believe they apply the same standard, correct, Elena? It's an undue adverse effect?
For the state, so that's a submission requirement of a preliminary plan application.
Is the state letter?
Is the response from, yes.
So that is required for this application to be?
Right. So this was such a very complete application last month, and those letters don't always come in right away, so it's something that we often take in at final plan.
But that is required to?
It is.
Okay. So my, so then if that's a requirement, then that's a requirement, we can't waive that.
That was sort of my point, is not, acknowledging all the opinions expressed here tonight, well, my point was based on, I don't think we can approve tonight. I think we can do a conditional approval.
Sure.
But we can't actually approve. So that being the case, we sort of blend the ideas, we couldn't complete this tonight.
So the idea...
A conditional approval based on an assessment we don't have, when that comes in, then that condition is met, but we still have, but if it's a negative assessment, then we've given up any...
Take a look at the way I wrote the proposed condition, if you would.
Yeah, but suppose it, make up a fantasy, Historic Preservation says, this is a terrible idea, and it will have this, this, and this effect. But we've made a approval condition upon getting the letter, but then we're unable to act upon it. We've already said that whatever, in effect, whatever they say doesn't matter.
I see. So you think by, that you aren't justified in making a finding on that criteria without the letter?
Otherwise, why require it?
I think Elena's proposed condition addresses your concern. It says, identify abutting historic sites and provide response letter from Maine Historic Preservation. If the response indicates the project is likely to have undue adverse effect, the applicant shall return to the planning board for further review of the criteria and standards with respect to historic sites. And that's a condition to be met prior to signing the plans. So you can't, you couldn't build anything. If we got a letter back that says, oh, wait a second, this type of apartment building would have an, may have an undue adverse effect on an abutting historic property, then we come back and we talk about that before anything's signed.
Which effectively, if that letter, if that letter arrives within the next month, and you haven't approved the project, and you've just continued it...
That's the potential lost time, if the letter comes in faster than 30 days.
Exactly. Which...
Well, no, it's not, because the plans would still need to be signed at your next meeting. So they shouldn't be getting a building permit until they have a signed plan. That's correct. Right? So if the letter takes two months, and you defer to next...
Let's say the...
But if the letter's all good, you don't have to do another review.
But we still have to sign the plan.
Right.
And that, I would point out, that doesn't have to wait till the next meeting that we have in the past. Come into the office and sign the plans, and as soon as they have the right number of signatures, it's filed.
Yep.
So that need not be the case, depending upon...
Well, is that all the more the reason to, if we are to vote whether or not to approve, that, and that be the condition because if...
Yes, you've convinced me.
Yeah. I think the board understands my position on this, so I don't need to say anything else, but I think...
I think along the same lines, and I think it was the first solar plant that we approved it, we did, we did not have the opinion from Ed Bear. We approved, we voted on it, we approved it with the caveat that the board members would review Ed's opinion and vote yes or no whether we, you know, liked his letter, approved his letter. Now, whether that's...
Was that an opinion on the decommissioning aspect?
Yes. That was the first solar farm we had done. It took a while for the applicant and the city, you know, Ed to get together on exactly what the wording should be.
Yes.
So we did vote to approve it at the final, the final plan, contending upon each board member would see that, that letter from Ed, the opinion from Ed, and say yes or no, we want to alter the opinion.
Yes. I think if you granted conditional approval with these proposed conditions, all you're doing is deferring to me to receive that letter, read that letter. If it says absolutely no problem, then we move forward. If it is questionable, then I'm evaluating it for, I think we need to go back to planning board and prepare for the next month. But regardless of what it is, you're either going to see it because there's an issue, or you're going to see it because there's not an issue, and here's the plan to sign with the letter. It's not going to be a secret. So similar to what you did with that opinion?
I hate it when I have to change my mind.
You've changed your mind again?
No, no, no.
Oh. I can't keep up.
Yeah, one thing we need to consider is, and the neighbors also, is, I mean, the plans that have been drawn up for this building are way above what the city requires. And, you know, if you have a choice of a building that looks like this versus a box, a plain box, if you want to see what a plain apartment house looks like, go up on one end. You know, there's some up there, you know, you definitely won't go on it on Pine Street, but yet it could be built on this one. Which would you, which would you rather have?
I, I, I just have to state the obvious, that the need for downtown urban housing is so bad, and we wonder why it's such a supply-demand imbalance. And here's why. And that's all I can say about the matter. I mean, if we're 10 months into execution of trying to get this thing off the ground, now we're going to be 2023 likely before we're able to put 12 units downtown, which is, as we all know, a drop in a bucket. And we wonder why no one else is doing it.
So for everyone's benefit, I do want to make clear that our requiring a letter from the Maine Historic Preservation Commission is part of the model ordinance promulgated by the state. This is not some onerous requirement unique to the city of Ellsworth.
Any further comments or questions from the board?
I have one question.
Okay.
Might not be relevant. So we've got a one-foot setback on Pine Street, is that correct?
Currently on the, on the plans you have, yes. However, that will likely get pushed back a little bit.
We suggested tonight that it could be pushed back some?
Yeah, I'm thinking probably an additional four feet is about what we, what we could do. Sound about right, John?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, that one foot that I think you're looking at, Mark, is not from the street, that's from the sidewalk.
It's from the sidewalk, but yeah.
Well, oh, yeah, all right. Sure, sure, sure.
Correct. Yeah, it's, this plan is interesting, but yeah, this, this area right here is the sidewalk.
Yes.
The curb line is actually here, so it's one feet, it's one foot actually from the, from the right-of-way.
Yes.
Which is actually back, four feet from the, from the back of the sidewalk. So it's actually, even, even as it's currently shown, it's, it's back, I can't read that from here, but it's a little cloudy, but...
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, one foot off the right-of-way.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the board? It's a public hearing. Anyone may comment upon this matter. I ask that before you comment or get recognized by the chair, step up to the lectern and identify yourself for the record. Does anyone wish to speak? Okay, please. Okay, please.
Thank you to the planning board and to all the members of the staff and the committee, and also to the members of the public who are here, and to Mr. Bates and his team for trying to make Ellsworth a better place. My name's Christina Holt. I grew up on Pine Street, across the street from the subject property. I went to high school here, and I have come back every single year for multiple weeks, if not months at a time. And I currently am a small business owner with my mother, and we are running rental properties here in town at her properties right at 65 Pine Street and 56 Church Street. And so I do truly honor the need that there is for housing here in Ellsworth. I have a letter that my mom wrote that I'd like to read into the record. I have some other points I wanted to make, and I also wanted to address some of the things that were said today. But I want to directly address the issue of the historical commission letter, because I've seen a copy of it, and I have a copy of it, that was addressed to the engineering firm that's representing Mr. Lyons' firm.
If I may, before you start reading. If you read anything, it's not part of the record. The record is created by what the board does.
Okay.
So it is not in the minutes, nothing, there would be nothing to reflect that it's been done, nor its contents. Just so you know, that it's not an official part of the, of the planning board's process.
But it may be an official part of public input.
Yes. So I just want you to know that it will not be reflected in the minutes of the meeting, which would be the basis for any legal review.
But I think if you have a written letter, you can certainly give us a copy.
Do we not?
I think she's talking about the letters that have already been written.
Well, there's a letter already written by my mother, which I co-signed, in order to be able to get it to you through email.
Yes.
And I have a letter that I will write with my comments, if that's the best way to make sure that it's all there. I have some bullet points. And then separately, I believe that the main historic preservation committee has issued its opinion, and I have a copy of that letter addressed to Drew Olakowski, Haley Ward, One Merchant Plaza, being more Maine from yesterday.
That's news to me as well.
And just out of curiosity, how did you obtain this?
By asking them if they've been able to review this case.
Yes, but they furnished the...
They furnished the letter.
Okay.
Very good. No, yeah, please read it, if you have the letter.
Indeed.
Okay. Mr. Olakowski, dear Mr. Olakowski, project HPC 1155-21, One Opus LLC, between Pine Street and Spruce Streets, 12-unit apartment building, town Ellsworth, Maine. In response to your recent request, I have reviewed the information received August 23rd, 2021, to continue consultation on the above referenced property project. Judging from Google Street View imagery, many of the buildings located on Pine Street are one and a half or two-story Greek revival-style residences whose gable ends face the street. The two-story house that was formerly on the building site also had Greek revival-style characteristics, but it was oriented with the roof ridge parallel to the street. Although the precise development history of this area is not known to us, it appears that most, if not all, of these houses were constructed in the second quarter of the 19th century. After review of the elevation drawings provided to us, it is our opinion that the proposed building is not compatible with the surrounding buildings. In particular, the scale and massing of the new construction are incongruent with the neighboring properties on Pine Street. In addition, the sighting of the building with its entrance into the rear parking lot results in a design that is inconsistent with the historic relationship and interaction of building to street that exists here. Please contact Megan Rideout of our staff at her email address or at this phone number if we can be of further assistance in this matter. Signed Kirk Mahoney, State Historic Preservation Officer, dated August 31st, 2021.
That's certainly interesting. We will, first of all, I'll say that the elevation plan has changed drastically since that elevation was sent to them. So they're not working from what was showed on the screen earlier. That has been sent to them, an updated one, we actually sent to them this afternoon. But, and that actually, I believe, addresses many of their comments that happens to, we, the version we sent before at the gable end, you know, sort of facing the road, both roads, we've rotated that roof line, added a lot of architectural details. This was, again, driven by Mr. Bates' recent communications, obviously the emails, understanding the, you know, the feedback we're receiving. So it is interesting. I've never, never heard that letter come back through, but like that. But, I mean, it's, it's a good thing, I guess, that we're looking to switch this thing around. We will absolutely work with the MHPC on that. I'm confident that we'll be able to get to a different opinion from them with the revised elevation drawings.
I was wondering if it's possible to get these elevations into the public records so that they can be downloaded and seen by anybody else, because they were not available over the course of the minutes from the August 4th meeting or the 24th site visit?
So that's why I just asked for a copy. This will go in the file in our office with this project. We don't put them online or anything, but I'm sure we can scan them and email them to you if you want to leave your email.
So just like Carrie had sent us the other materials before, we could get Carrie or somebody from the office to send us?
Or you can come in and look at it if you prefer.
I'd prefer both. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so my understanding of the commission's role in this is to look at the environment of the proposed project, and one of the subdivision ordinances does say that any new construction needs to not adversely affect the people on either side or facing the new construction. And so it's in one of the subdivision ordinances. And so, as Mr. Lyons was saying, you know, you guys don't make the ordinances, but those ordinances exist. And in reading through them, it does not only say that the historic district, but all places where historic buildings are. And there's also that list, as I think the staff member referenced, of all the properties that are designated historic sites and landmarks. And there's 38 of them, 14 of which are on Main Street or State Street, and only three of which have been designated in the last 10 years. So this is a older list of historic properties. It's not like people have been stacking this list. There are the right side of the property down the street, across the street, directly across the street, and then the school building to the side that are all on this historic register list, or on the national list of historic properties. There's also three other properties directly across on High Street that are either on the National Historic Registry or eligible for the National Historic Registry, and that is an easily attainable website that you can download and expand the property listings to see. I'm not sure what motivation it takes or what efforts it takes to list those buildings, but in the letter that my mother and I sent, we did do screenshots of those three buildings on High Street, one of which was named, the 24 High Street is the Joshua Jordan House. It used to be the Keynes Motel Hotel when I was in high school. And then the Albert Hopkins Street is just down the street and to the right from the subject property. 65 Pine Street, where I grew up, is the Cop Door House, and the one next door is the Dr. Walter Haynes House. So of the 38 properties, if you subtract the 14 on Main Street and High Street, then three of the remaining 24, or one-eighth of them, are right next to this property. So I would argue that the planning commission has an opportunity to capitalize on the attractiveness of our historic town by allowing the process to build housing that's needed, bring people in to get to live in a place that carries that history and carries that look for the future, and have their economic well-being tied up with our ability to protect that what makes our town so attractive to all of us. And I think it's rather delightful to see what's behind you here. These historic buildings are all on this list, the library, the city hall, the Black House, the Woodlawn Mansion, and they're all in either federal or Greek revival style. And even though the city hall was built in this 19th century, I mean, the 20th century, it has some elements of design that give it a scale and scope that fits into the landscape where it is. So we very much appreciate your listening to the comments and concerns about the physical elements of the building. Elements of the building, including the height, the width, the setbacks, the extra elements like porches or green space, are in addition to the engineering requirements that these buildings have. And I did listen carefully to the August 4th meeting, and I am concerned and curious about whether or not the calculations had been done to understand what the amount of coverage of the proposed property would do to the water runoff, because the two properties that were there before were large homes, but two-story homes or two and a half, and they had driveways, but those were imper, those were gravel driveways, and they both had substantial lawn area, where this property now no longer has that much lawn. So I'm not the hydrologist engineer, but one of the members that was there in August did ask that question, and I believe the staff member referenced that in the downtown zone, the wastewater runoff is not of great concern, just because there's maybe some regulation. However, I would just offer that it's worth consideration about whether those calculations bear out. And when the preliminary meeting is about making sure the paperwork is there, my understanding is that you have this month's time and maybe some further time if it needs to happen to determine whether or not it meets the criteria that the board and the ordinances have set out. So that's just a concern I have based on the numbers that I see for the proposal and the size of the lots related to the engineering materials. And so my, my main points that I wanted to make in the form of reading my mom's letter, I'm not going to go through all of that. I understand that you have all seen that. The issues that we wanted to make sure were accurately understood by us is that although the planning board does not have purview to do lots of things, it certainly has purview to assure that any new construction be completed in a manner which is compatible with the character of those properties, which comes from both the Ellsworth Historic ordinances and also the planning commission's charge. And I would just say that the timeframe of how all this has gone may be unfortunate in the minds of the developer, but I do feel like there's an opportunity for everybody to come to a great understanding and come up with a project that suits the needs of not only the developer, but the future residents of our town. And certainly, it's an opportunity for the planning board to use this pre-new comprehensive plan time to start to think about what's going to really help us in the long run, to make sure that our economic development and our cultural heritage are aligned with the buildings and the properties and businesses that we support.
If I may. The historic preservation commissions works with their own ordinance, which we are not empowered to enforce. So the planning board can really make no notice of the historic preservation ordinance. It's out of our authority. Ours, in respect to compatibility, is very vague. The definition for adverse impact is a negative, a negative consequence for the physical, social, or economic environment resulting from an action or project, which is not of great definition. It really does not give us much to go on, except feelings. And should that go to appeal, I think it's unlikely that a court would oppose this, because we were not acting upon specifics. We're just, nothing to pin it on. So I am concerned about that. Jean, what, what do you think about that definition? Is that something we can really?
What definition?
It's adverse impact. It's under, it's chapter 14 definitions.
Page two.
Oh, you don't have all the dividers, do you?
No, I have here. So an adverse impact, a negative consequence for the physical, social, or economic environment resulting from an action or project. I mean, yeah, the definition isn't all that specific, but here we're doing an undue adverse impact. So you have to throw the undue on top of that. So in that sense, you can have somewhat of an impact on something, but you can't, can't be undue. But, you know, the board is open to, to discuss what that definition means. But ma'am, were you, did you conclude your comments?
I'm not done.
Do we have time limitations on the double comments?
No, but at 10 o'clock, we disappear. That's an old policy that was thrown around sometimes.
Okay, and I'm, I just wanted to...
So we have time.
So the other aspect of the development, and as I said, I have not seen anything other than just the site footprint. There hasn't been any able, ability to get access till now to the renderings, but from the footprint, it doesn't seem apparent where people who live there are going to gather. It is not clear where they might sit outside and have a cigarette if they're not smoking in the building. It's not clear where they would hang out and try to grow a tomato. And so there is some adverse physical effects of not having access to the outdoors. And in a place that we're building and calling a wonderful place to introduce people to our town, we would just encourage the development to consider the beneficial health impacts and the beneficial physical impacts that are capable of being built into any new construction. Stairways, external stairways, seating areas, porches, covered areas, grasslands, things that would allow that building to be more than just the space inside. And I've seen some depictions of the constructions and the insides, which are beyond beautiful. And I have no doubt that this group has access to design specialists and potentially even architectural specialists who could help to implement and integrate those kinds of elements so that a 12-unit or potentially slightly smaller could certainly fit within the historical aspects of things. I'm not able to say if that's true or not true. It does seem like none of these buildings are as tall or as large as the one that's proposed. And I would also reference that the August 4th meeting, I believe Ms. Friedland asked about whether there's other such tall buildings. And although it appears there may be, because the High Street building, the Old Pine Street School, appears to be high, it does measure under 40 feet, and it's at a slightly higher elevation, so it may give that impression of being a large mass, but it in fact is not higher than this would be. So that may impact visibility, sightlines, and the, the flow of just the traffic downtown and through things. I know you all talked about the traffic impact and that 18 parking spots is not considered to be a lot, but as we all know, Ellsworth is incredibly busy during the summertime, and so having some potential way of creating some space in that double lot area that allows for people to not feel like they are just one street from the busiest street in the Down East area would be a health benefit to the people who are choosing to have that as their residence. And I know it's not your purview to say how a design needs to look, but the design elements need to be in keeping with the neighborhood, and especially because of the ordinances about the impact on historical buildings that are abutting and across from it. So...
But that's not in our ordinance.
Okay.
So you're dealing, you're blending two entities which don't work together. There's no, it's a separate process. Ours is defined by the, our ordinance, and we're bound by that. We don't have the type of flexibility that you and I might wish. We're stuck. So, and the planning board does not have the authority to dictate how the, how the property is used if the use described or proposed meets the requirements of the ordinance. Sure, not a lot. So, again, wanting something and being able to deliver it are two different things. If the ordinance does not meet the needs of the citizens of Ellsworth, then they need to work to change them. We cannot change them. That is the purview of the city council. We can propose changes, but we cannot make the changes.
Thanks for the clarification. I don't mean to conflate them, but I did understand that the requirement for getting the input, in... the input from the main Historical Preservation Committee was something that is a part of what you need to see in this package, and that it does need to be favorable. And so, my comments are reflecting ways in which my understanding of why it may be currently unfavorable could be mitigated, taking certain things into account that would adhere and adapt and leverage the community that is right there.
It's a great argument. But, it's interesting that while we're required to have the input in these letters, there's nothing saying that we can do anything with it. Nothing says that we have to take into account what the letter says, especially as Historic Preservation. It's just that we need to have that. Doesn't direct us to do anything. Doesn't even give us the authority to do anything. It's very weird.
What is, sorry, what is the requirement?
Well, I think that those letters would be much more helpful if they pertain to a site on the site of the project. You know, if we, in the different sections of your ordinances that are applicable to historic sites, all but the one that Patrick pointed out, have to do with when there is a historic site on the project site. So, that is when you're supposed to be terribly concerned with protecting that site. If it's, if the historic thing is off the site, on a different property than the proposal, the only thing that I think, and I think Mr. Lyons agrees with me, that applies, is the state subdivision criteria, which is repeated in our ordinance, because it has to be, that there be no undue adverse impact on those sites.
Everybody keeps looking at Patrick tonight, too. But in the, in the letter, the language was not undue adverse effect. It was, the style is incongruous.
Well, I think-
And it may be, but I'm not-
It's a little hard to evaluate this question, having heard the letter once, from somewhere else. I mean, I don't doubt that it's real, but I don't think it mentioned a great threat.
I'm sorry, my phone died, so I can't either reread it or forward it on to anybody. But, is it true that the letters say undue adverse impact or not, like checking a box? Or is it a matter of interpretation?
I'm sure it's a matter of interpretation. I don't think they would use that language.
Can I say something? I mean, I think, I think the best thing to do, instead of going back and forth here, is I care just as much about the people on Pine Street as I do the development. So, I think what we need to do is, like Mr. Fink said, let's just table this. There's no sense in going back and forth. I need to know who to address, and then that way, we can all get together, and then everyone's happy with the development. And after hearing you speak, I agree with her. I mean, I think, I think it'd be very, very, in my position, it would be the right thing to do, to just table this and not waste everybody's time, and get everybody together who wants to get involved and make sure, I mean, I tried that in the beginning, and apparently, we didn't have any, everybody there. So, let's do that, and get everybody's opinion, then submit to the Historical Society with the actual depiction, which is what we tried to do, with what everybody feels would be best for the area and neighborhood. Instead of going back, I mean, in a world where everyone wants to disagree about everything, I do not want to disagree. I'm tired of that. So, let's just table it, let's not waste everybody's time, let's get together and talk about everything, and see, then submit to the Historical Society and say, this is what we're proposing. And then, I think the greatest question is whether or not they accept it. And I think that would be the right thing to do, so.
And you're preferring the main Historic Preservation Commission? Just for clarification.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, main historical, whatever.
I think that's fine. I mean, I think the important thing is that, at some point, the city has the letter in hand before the plans are signed. I don't think that, you know, I think it's wonderful if you and the neighbors come to agreements, and especially so if the Historic Preservation Commission endorses those agreements. I don't think it's going to make that much difference here. So, yes, still tabling would probably be the easiest-
I agree.
-way. But I don't want to create the expectation that you're going through that while you're going through this, creates a promise from the city that we're holding you to a certain design, that we don't really have the expertise to enforce.
Sure.
Let alone the-
Not the authority.
Right.
And I understand that, but as a developer, I like to communicate with everybody to make sure that everybody's happy with the, with the project, and I care more about that than I do the tenants in the building. So, let's just table it, let's not waste any more time going back and forth, and let's get together with the appropriate people and make sure that everyone's happy with the development, and then submit that to the, whatever it is. NA PC.
I mean, it doesn't seem like Mr. Bates is planning to go backwards. You know, he's presented, you know, it appears to be a beautiful building, and, you know, I don't think he's saying, okay, the next rendition is going to be white walls and straight up and down. Obviously, he's going above and beyond. And, you know, he's suggesting to table it? Kind of sounds like that's the best thing to do at this point.
Well, I'm a bit uncomfortable with the concept of a beautiful building. I don't think that is in our purview. And I don't know, quite frankly, where we can go with this, according to the rules. Can we table it at this point? Or do we have to continue the public comment?
No, but I would continue the public, since the public session is not closed, I would continue with that till everyone has a say, who wants to have a say. And at that point, a motion to table would be in order.
I agree, I agree.
So, have you more for us?
I would say, no, I don't think so. Let me just double check. Like I said, I am glad that you all got to read the whole letter, because I was just desirous of being sure that everybody could understand that we understand no ill will from the developer, but we did not get the information when the community meeting was held, or when the, I was not able to come for the site visit. So, just the, the understanding I had that the last meeting was about making sure everything was there, and that in between, it's assessing whether or not it meets your standards and the ordinances that you need to follow. And then separately, the extra sort of bit of goodwill and blue sky that Mr. Bates is offering is much appreciated, because we do all believe that housing is needed, and that Ellsworth is a wonderful place, and that people, we've seen this in the rentals that we're managing, that people who come here, mostly they're staying at 56 Church Street, and the things they're saying about downtown Ellsworth and walking distance to here and there, and the fact that they're in a building that looks like all the other beautiful buildings that have been maintained on that street, and even developed, is, is a really wonderful thing to hear. You know, after seeing how much things change over the years, it's really great to see that we're able to pull in the energy that loves down east Maine, and get, let some of it land here, and not just on the other peninsulas. So, I appreciate that offer, and I would expect that we can come to a great conclusion from the proposal point of view. And obviously, that's not your purview necessarily, but I would hope that you would allow that input to be part of this process, given the importance to the historic nature of the street, and to our feeling of alignment on that part of the neighborhood. The last thing I wanted to say is about the zoning, and this is obviously something that may be, you will tell me, go to the city council, but the downtown area zone is quite extensive, and Main Street has its own special rules about no setbacks and 60 feet, and nobody can make a setback. And that all the rest of the downtown area is not held to anything other than those standards, but you can see from the downtown maps, the majority of the downtown district are residential areas. And I walked down the street to school at the Baptist Church, I walked over to what's now the Nolan Park, and all of those neighborhoods do follow and conform to the residential district code, which has the 10 to 20 feet front and 10 feet on either side. And when you get north of Beale Avenue, which is only two blocks away, that's the requirement. So, I understand that zoning is a different topic, but the aspect of setting and setback and scope and scale, that may be your purview with the engineering requirements, maybe could be considered to not necessarily have to conform to those downtown constrictions. And I understand that the idea is to maybe push it back five feet or six feet. And it is true that the house next door does have a porch that goes up to that six-foot mark. So, that would not be completely out of keeping. So, there's obviously solutions, and I appreciate the chance to get to talk with you all about something that's very important to me and my family, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And I must say, I remember your father very fondly.
Oh, that's nice to hear. Thank you.
So, does anyone else wish to speak? Okay.
Okay. Give me a whirl. Thank you. My name is Betsy Aronson, and I live on 61 Pine Street. I also measured the building that is 27 High Street? Can I pass this along?
That's okay, we got it. Thank you.
What did you get?
I know the building.
I measured it. I know the height of it.
Okay, so is that detailed there? Is that why I need to see it?
I showed my work.
I see. Please.
Okay.
How did you make the measurement?
A tape measure, up to the window, of the top window, the bottom sill of the top window, and then I enlarged photographs and counted rows of bricks. So, I'd like to start by saying something in favor of John Bates, in this project. My husband, Doug, and I know him. He has been, in his previous career, had a company, was a top company to hire. We hired him two times for this, for same product and service, delivered top results. We respect his career as a builder. We're having identified an unfilled niche in housing market, and filling it so successfully that his properties are full, and he reports that there is a waiting list. We admire, I admire, John for his creativity and foresight to turn his attention to increasing housing into the, in the walkable downtown core. And his proposed project at 64 Pine Street is a worthy project, because it does provide needed additional housing. I've met with John three times this year, and I have, every time, my single and unwavering message is that the facade of the building needs to conform to the design elements of the houses around it. And you've seen this report, which I provided him in one of my meetings. Just to have the eye, eye of the historic nature of Pine Street and the surrounds. I would like to say that there are four buildings of historic significance that flank this, and if I can use this mark here. So, the picture circulating is the building here, and then here, here, and here, four flanking historic structures. So, a 27 High Street is a brick structure built in the style of a schoolhouse used for over 125 years, as a school, built in the 1830s, and its architectural significance qualifies it for the National Register of Historic Places, according to the Maine Historic Preservation Commission. It's the same age as the house that Doug and I live in, which is 61 Pine Street, which is the oldest house on Pine Street, arguably one of the oldest houses in Ellsworth, also built at the same time as the Woodlawn Black House, which is about 1830s in our case. Our house was designated by the City of Ellsworth as a historic landmark, and so is number 62 and number 65. So, of the sheet of paper that lists all the historic structures, there are 25 or six there are houses, and three of them are on Pine Street. So, Pine Street is a residential street of houses built prior to 1860, and Pine Street is one of Ellsworth's oldest streets, both in age of structure and how they situate with one another, forming a historic street of residences in a livable downtown neighborhood. And we owners of historic landmark buildings not only have a responsibility to maintain our own building, we have a responsibility to the history, heritage, and historic preservation of Ellsworth, in the context of the streets and streetscapes and neighborhoods in which our buildings are situated. This is a key point, because we're not talking about one building, then one other building, and then one other building after that. It creates an environment, a streetscape, a neighborhood, and this is what I'm describing. So, I have three, I have several messages for the planning board. According to Article 602.2, it's important to have a complete plan, and until today, you probably did not have a complete plan, because it is customary and usual for a plan to show, in a three-dimensional structure, how it will look in three dimensions, so.
Not required by the ordinance.
It is customary and usual, that's my point.
It is not required.
It is customary and usual, and that is my point.
And therefore, a plan that does not have that-
Thank you.
-can be considered and is complete.
Thank you.
Is there anybody at this table who has not read this letter?
No. But, I would also admonish you that your attitude and the way you're addressing the board is not in your favor.
I appreciate that, and I apologize, and I'm going to dial it back. I do get heated, and I apologize for what is coming across as not pleasant. I appreciate your commentary, and I apologize for that. Another, another point I'd like to make is that the Historic Preservation Ordinance, Chapter 39, is relevant, and the city planner makes a good point, and has brought up another point as well, that it is not applicable to the buildings if they are no longer standing. However, the ordinance, and I'll read it, was adopted for the purposes of preserving, protecting, and enhancing buildings and places, or areas, within the city which possess particular historic or architectural significance, in order to promote the education, cultural, and economic welfare of the residents and the visitors to the city. Then it goes on to say, any new construction be completed in a manner which is compatible with the character of those designated historic properties. And so, Pine Street is a historic place or area within the city, and that's the point that I'd like to, like to bring forward. It's about a collection of these historic structures. So, it does occur to me that when you're, when undue and adverse effect shows up several times, and the ordinance is like at 601.1 and 601.2, that you're searching for a criteria, a list of criteria, that doesn't seem to be available. And that is, that is a concern, because you're having to make decisions without having a list of criteria, you're just giving those, those statements and making judgments. And I understand it to be very difficult, and I don't know how to help with that solution, but I, I'd be happy to help with that solution if that was something we would like to do, is come up with a list of criteria, because this seems like an important crux, you know, crux of a matter. And, and you make a good point, John, when you say that you, and, and the Historic Preservation Ordinance are not in alignment, because you're from two separate organizations. But, it's, it is an interesting thing, because it makes you both work at cross purposes to each other. So, resolving that, I'd be happy to help in any way that we could resolve that as well. So, I'd like to be someone who could help to make more of these connections, and make more of a positive collaboration between these several organizations, because I think these, these ordinances do make a difference, because they're going to be part of, an important part of Ellsworth's history. So, lose my commentary. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? Hearing not, and I shall close the public hearing.
Are you going to continue it?
Oh, continue. Yes.
I thought you were planning to continue it.
Well, the, yes, I shall close it for this evening. And I, I don't believe in not having the public participate.
I agree.
So.
Just for my own notice requirement sake.
I don't want you to lose sleep over this. So, relax. So, board, who wants to make the motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table this.
A second.
Uh-huh. Is there discussion?
Carol, I say until next month, or?
I would say table it until the advocate is ready to come back to us, and leave it up to him, rather than our setting a deadline, which may be impractical. up to him rather than our setting a deadline which may be impractical. So if that's okay with everyone, then let's do it that way. All those in favor, please? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I have another point I have to land on.
What's that?
Number one brings us pizza.
Nobody brings us pizza. Nobody wants to hear any staff comments at this point.
Yeah.
Nobody wants even to adjourn yourself.
We need to get John.
Should we adjourn?
Let's just remember, we used to shut this down at 10.
That was made before the show.
Yes.
Sorry.
We haven't adjourned.
I guess we're adjourned.
We haven't adjourned.
Are we adjourned?
Not yet. Not yet.
We're probably still on television, then.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. In that case, we have to take a vote. All those in favor of adjourn?
Aye.
Or adjourn?
Okay.